Good evening, welcome to the regular twice monthly meeting for Westminster Mayor and Common Council. Please note that our meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, are also available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now, we'll begin with your every meeting with the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phone or any other electronic devices that might ring or beep in the meeting. Thank you. Copy of the tonight's agenda and the entire information pack for the council meeting are always available online on the city's website. For anybody who happens to be here in person, if you'd like visit a hard copy of the agenda, there should be one, I believe, in front of the booth. And before we go into our regular agenda, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our special guest this evening. When Julia Jaskin became president of McDaniel College, she made the commitment to us that she would try to have members of first year staff regularly, frequently, be able to share with us news about what's happening at McDaniel College and also to take back news of what's happening in the city. Please tonight, there's Heidi Regal with us, the Association Vice President of Alumni and Graduate Engagement at the college. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Sure, anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Sure, so I gathered the leadership team and we wanted to make everybody aware of a few things that had happened over the course of and what's coming up. So, we signed a transfer agreement with Carroll Community College and this is really key because that was an interview for 24 years before getting into my current role and I'm really excited about this because it's a dual admissions agreement offering a clear pathway between a student who earns an AA degree at Carroll Community and then they can easily transfer that and earn their bachelor's degree. So it's a, it's very clear, so we're excited about that. The other thing that happened, we had a parent and family weekend, the first of its kind, with full programming at the beginning of November and we truly appreciated the discounted deals from downtown the business partners here in Westminster. So hopefully families took advantage of that. And some of the programming actually included the Arts Center's Black American Film Festival, which happened on Friday night and there were high compliments from that programming from our attendees who went to that event. President Jaskin is very excited about the college's sponsorship of the Boys and Girls Club Holiday Party that's coming up this week, you know, where we provide children with gifts and members of the college leadership team, including her, will assist with the party as Santa and as elves. So they're very excited about that. And then last but not least, President Jaskin is also looking forward along with the rest of the college leadership with the hosting of a breakfast for the city council this Wednesday as part of our ongoing partnership and collaboration. So that's what I bring to the seat, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
We're all looking forward to the meeting with the leadership team there as well, as we've done the last few years and I think that'd be great. If we have a first of the end with the college and of course, we want the increased partnership that we have.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Want to ask you a question?
Please, go ahead.
So Heidi, two questions.
Okay.
Do they have to have an AA? I have a pretty tight relationship with the community college. Do they have to have an AA or can they come with less than that?
They can.
They're freshmen and they want to start their sophomore year.
Yes, they can come in literally with anything as long as they're admissible, but we've never had a, an agreement where it said with an AA, you need to take X, Y, and Z to get a bachelor's degree and X amount of time. It was always individualized depending on how much you have done. So there's a lot of partnerships in the state where an AA at a larger university, it should, so we never had that in black and white. It was very gray.
So the, like the, what do they call them, the students, or the advisors?
Yes.
So the advisors at Carroll
No.
have the, you know, the prerequisite, what they need to do.
Exactly.
Excellent, that's awesome. And second and far more important, do you want to introduce your assistant?
Yes, this is my son, Kai, he's eight years old and he loves soccer and he goes to Friendship Valley Elementary. And he loves Westminster.
He'll be right out there one day.
Yes.
I wouldn't wish it on anybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Mayor? All right, thank you so much. Yeah, it's wonderful to have you here today. Let me just note for everybody's benefit that Councilman Dan Hoff is not able to be with us in person tonight. He is doing another meeting. He tested positive over the weekend. After, we all been with him for the miracle on Main Street. So we all tested negative, thank God. But just a reminder that it's still out there, still going around. It could happen to anybody, so please, we try to stay safe.
Who doesn't uniform that much too?
He did, that's right. To make our city clerk happy, let me make my statement for the record about our closed meeting of Monday, November 14th. In accordance with the general provisions, Article Section 3-306b2 of the Antedote Code of Maryland, and without objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect the common council met in a closed meeting on Monday, November 14th, 2022 at 9:19 PM pursuant to General Provisions Article Section 3-305b1 to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, emotion, discipline of emotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction and any other personal matter that affects one or more stewardess. Most of the closed meetings were unanimous, there were no staff attendants. The common council took no action during the meeting and the closed meeting occurred at 9:58. Yeah. Let me, let me also mention, and without objection, it would be so ordered that we're going to take two items of business off of the agenda under new business. First, we're going to hold any item on the government house for faculty access, more information connecting. And we're also going to hold a closed reading that we had scheduled for this evening. So without objection, that is no worry. Now, so we will move on to presentations. Our first presentation is our quarterly update on the Westminster Fiber Network project and we'd please have Ricky Slinkman of Ting Internet here with us if you would like to share some news on how they've been doing for the last couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you so much, good evening, everyone. Appreciate you having me here tonight. So as we always do with our key growth metrics, so continuing to see steady growth in terms of the number of subscribers as well as, I was like, don't blow my punchline, I've got three counts in here. And while as a really consistent and relatively low number of cancellations, again, we continue to see the majority of the reason that people cancel is because they're moving and then most of the time we're able to catch those and then add them as new subscribers starting the same month. I noticed it a while ago on one of the reports that we sent and so now I check vigilantly every time, like that's why there's an address in the addition section as well as the cancellations because typically it's within 24 hours, someone moves out and the new resident gets service. So between the first three months of the year and summer, we saw a 3% increase in subscribers and then between the summer and then going into the fall, another 4% back. And I should also note, in March is when we crested over 2,000 subscribers on the network. And then just in terms of what we've been up to from a marketing standpoint, a ton of events and I always say this is because the city does such a fantastic job of providing so many opportunities for us to get involved in the community as well as working with the Chamber of Commerce and several of our awesome nonprofit organizations. So we entered the Peep Show and partnered with Magic on that. So this is our key sports arena, esports arena. And it, we're very, we're very funny. We also supported the Walk a Mile in their queue with the Rate Crisis of Innovation Service, Innovation, pardon me, Intervention Service of Carroll County. And then we've maintained a continued strong sponsorship of the Carroll Biz Challenge. And we also, in attempt to get in front of more families, are sponsoring the, sponsored the Carroll Arts Council Free Summer Movie Series and then was lucky to get a nice photo opportunity at Pride with Councilman Dayhoff, Councilman Hoff and his wife and that Billy Live who runs Find Your Purpose, another amazing nonprofit that we have in town. I've been doing a lot of work with Billy and tried to spread the word about Ting amongst families as well as information about the Affordable Connectivity Program, which I'll cover in a few slides. So he had a youth talent showcase that was at the Carroll Arts Council and we sponsored that. And then also a sponsor of Westminster Fall Fest, which who knows, with River is, was a fantastic event and you were just running around all weekend and making sure that everybody was, was supportive and everyone that I saw had a fantastic time as usual. So, an important component of my job is not just trying to attract new people to the network, but also making sure that current subscribers are happy with their service, but also I like to do little things that we call sort of, you know, delight and surprise. So I do those on a quarterly basis and those are either events or giveaways. It just kind of depends what's, what's going on. So the two that I've done so far, I did a Hello Summer giveaway, which was to usher in the summer on the first day of summer, pulled four customers at random and gave them gift baskets with all sorts of fun like snacks and goodies and different sort of summer themed activities from some of our amazing shops like Rudolph Girls Bookstore, Cultivated and Heart Made Collaborative. And then to usher in National Coffee Day because we have a very vibrant main street of lots of awesome cafes and coffee shops, provided 10 customers with a $25 gift card and then recommended, you know, they go out and spend that at Jeannie Bird, Bertie's, American Exco, Rare Opportunity, Molly's, any of the fantastic options that we have. And then probably my favorite thing from this, from this past, these past two quarters was a campaign that we had ongoing, which we call a Perfect Match and it was a campaign in which we partnered with Double Dog Dare Rescue, which is a rescue up here in Westminster and is very close to my heart because one of my pups is a DDR rescue from Texas. He was not unfortunately photogenic enough to be featured in any of the creative, but these are all pups that are, that are, belong to members of the Ting family. And so we were able to donate $50 for every order back to Double Dog Dare and to help increase engagement, we also did a photo contest on social media and so you will see Mayor Becker's own Winks and Wilson, who were finalists in the contest. And I would say there was no, I don't think nepotism is the right word, but there was no favoritism because as an employee, I was not allowed to vote. So that was purely organic.
They were looking in the fireplace waiting for.
It was, it was a beautiful photo. And then earlier I had mentioned Affordable Connectivity Program, which is, it's not a new program. It's something that the federal government put into place under what they had been calling EBV, but then they decided to make it a permanent program and call it the Affordable Connectivity Program or HCP. And we have been supporting this from day one, but have really tried to make it, as you may have guessed, some federal programs, when you go to apply for them, it's not necessarily the easiest process. A lot of it, if you have to do online and you're like, well, if you don't have an internet connection, how are you going to do this online? So we're trying to make it as easy as possible and also help people understand like why, if they just have a cell phone right now, how they could potentially benefit from having Ting Internet. So we've done that via direct mail flyers that I have at several nonprofits throughout downtown as well as we're able to feature that in the city's newsletter twice, I think, over the, over the quarter. So thank you, this impulse and Mr. Dick for that, for being able to get that in there. We did actually have someone reach out and send our customer support representative a picture of the newsletter and they were like, this, we want this. So yeah, it's great to be when it actually does, you know, you see something that you physically did that now comes to fruition and he is now a happy Ting store. So those are all the highlights. Are there any questions that I can answer for you all?
Any questions, Mr. Dick?
Just the numbers, I mean, phase one, 51%, fantastic. And hopefully that will continue to come up as time goes on, especially given the numbers that are really there. It's, it's good stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Kavachi. I think that, you know, this is sort of a longer run, you know, game to get, to get these numbers, but that phase one, I think we can anticipate looking forward in years to the other, to the other phases there. And I'd also like to just say, you know, thanks for the continued customer service and, and I know we talked before meeting, I was going to talk about a little bit later, but you know, there was a hiccup that occurred on Saturday morning with lots of questions. We all were getting questions about the network. But, you know, we all agree that that, that was, and it was an Amazon, it affected the Amazon hosted sites. But we also agree, we've had Ting at home for maybe five years, four and a half years and this is the first time where there's been any sort of, I don't even know, this isn't even really major because it still came back on after, you know, everything was still accessible after a couple of hours. But, you know, just the reliability of the service the city has been able to have, I think that's just been really outstanding. Thank you.
No, and thank you so much for, for that, really for me. Any outage is a major deal. Just wondering if I impacted that since I got heck from my son for not being able to watch YouTube. Ended up being the, the end of the world, but all was, was resolved. But also that's really kudos to, to Mr. Dick and his teams' work within Public Works of their art. You know, the physical fiber infrastructure is strong and we're not dealing with any sort of issues with that. So it's easy for us to support you all when the network itself is strong.
That's one of the reasons we built a fiber network. All right, thank you very much. I will say that, you know, I'm about to cancel my Ting service but I'm already going up and running up my new house. So, so you'll see one drop and unfortunately it's already dead.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Again, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is, Mr. Carter, we're going to share a presentation with us on public art in the Wakefield Valley Park. Mr. Carter, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Abby said I didn't have to do a PowerPoint, so. I'm going to take this opportunity to talk about a proposed sculpture at Wakefield Valley Park. I threw out the idea, I don't know, late September maybe, and then again, developing it and then presented it again. And then I submitted a project grant proposal to the Maryland State Arts Council for full funding. That was done on October 24th and it says that they should notify in eight weeks. So I think we should hear by then in December if it's been funded. And I have no idea, it will be funded, but I feel very good about the application and the piece. And I was encouraged to apply after, after I spoke in Maryland Sarah's household. So a little bit about me, I did, I made sprouts in Westminster and that was my first public sculpture and since then, I have 10. So this would be the 11 if we get it. Thank you. It's me. But the piece that I proposed for Wakefield is called Raven Tree. So it's a big stainless steel tree with ravens on it. That's big. This is a rendering of it. I have a, a little sculpture I made. Start the other, so here's, the ravens are paper with tape, just to give a sense for, you know, what it might look like. And this is a photo of that with raven superimposed on it. And here is a schematic of it that describes the size and its construction. That's a little person there to show, oh, oh wow, it's a big. Yeah. So, thought maybe I would say more, do you guys have a question?
And, and I'm going to share a story with you, is why I'm guessing, but what prompted you, obviously the ravens are a popular theme burn in the area. But was there something specific at Wakefield that prompted you to do that?
Well, I, one thing I did want to say, I think Wakefield has the potential to be a sculpture park. It's just a beautiful space and a very large space, so a lot of pieces could occupy it. I mean, you can tell from my portfolio of public pieces that they're all nature based. So I'm, I'm drawn to making pieces that reflect nature. I think, you know, there's a bit of irony making a tree out of stainless steel.
In a park full of regular trees. So there's a tree. Are you familiar with how a hole layout was? Did you go off course, did you ever play there?
No.
Me telling you which hole it was won't help you, but there's a specific tree out there that every time I'm out there, and it's a dead tree, but it's big and every time there's six, eight, 10 big birds. Not only that there was ravens, it might be vultures or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
It looks
Yeah, it looks like that.
Not that different than that. I've actually, and I'm not going to try to dig through my phone, but I've actually got some pictures of that tree with these birds in it. I thought maybe you had been out there and saw that because it's really close to looking, it's really kind of cool.
Yeah.
Dr. Becker.
Yes. So first of all, I have always been a big fan of your sculptures and I'm honored to hear that your first public sculpture was Sprouts. That I was not aware of.
I love that.
Before you had done something before. And so I'm going to pat Westminster on their back a little bit for stringing you into your work in Frederick, which of course, every time we're along Carroll Creek, I, I mean, you're prolific in Frederick with all those, with all those public sculptures there along Carroll Creek. I, I too, I know we've talked about this a little bit. I would love to see some sort of longer term vision to have not only your sculpture at Wakefield, but also we have some real phenomenal metal artists in Carroll County.
Yeah.
And to have some of their work featured at Wakefield as well.
Yeah, I met with, I suppose, last Friday, whenever that was, with Bart, Bart Walters.
Yeah.
And, yeah, he's pretty high end, but he, I think he gets it that he needs to give back. So I said, well, how about, how about a loner, a loner sculpture at Wakefield? So he was open to that. And two other, probably Charlie Neerana, who made the quilt cubes. He does a lot of pieces that are colorful like that. And Donna McCullough makes dresses out of metal.
Oh wow, okay.
Yeah, they're very interesting.
Yeah, and which is, I, I, thank you for sharing it, that's true.
My art partner, Elizabeth Atar.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I think you have a good chance.
We had a vision a number of years ago to do a sculpture park here at City Hall and I've discussed that with people on a number of occasions. But I think Wakefield Valley would be excellent as a sculpture park. The, the numbers, the economic number, the economic development numbers and the demographics, the metrics over attracting folks to town with sculpture gardens, it's just, it's just off the charts. There are a number of city halls and parks on the West Coast, some that I have visited. And they, they just, there's just so many people come to them, so. You can be the, the beginning.
Yeah, that'd be the scene, the scene.
It means just love yourself, but.
How tall?
I'd say 22 feet. So my plan was you're going to build it in three sections.
How tall are these seeds?
I think they're 11, yeah.
So we're talking like 20? We're talking 50k guys.
Okay, it's like a tree.
Have you ever done anything that large before?
Yeah, well, Sprouts is pretty big. The feather, the feather, the last piece I just moved on in Solidary, the feather is 23 feet tall, I think. Yeah.
We have a close location of where it will be.
We do. I, I didn't, I didn't present that. Is there a hole for that hill or?
It's actually, it will be off of the sight line of the former driving range.
Ohio on the hill. That makes sense, that'd be the cool spot for it.
Yeah.
That where you would tee off for the driving range?
Yeah.
Like, yeah, like there's still distant marker out there somewhere. I think that vicinity is what we were, some of their thinking just because of its sheer size and stature.
That'd be a cool spot for it.
Yeah, you see the sunshine now.
That'd be cool. That's true, especially if you're in the, in, near the building and looking at sunset.
Well, this is exciting.
Yeah, yeah, that's exciting.
Be calling for you to get the.
All right.
There's nothing for us to do tonight, is there, is there a house?
Sorry, sir.
Nothing for us to do tonight, right?
That's correct. As part of the, of Tom's state application, they encourage a briefing to the elected body. So he wanted to come here tonight and make sure he was able to say that he had done that.
Well, you can say we were briefed and it was well received.
Yes, and thank you for the letter of support. I included that in the application. That's important to have.
All right, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay as long as you like then. Don't be a menu, I'd rather do that.
It really won't be a fun day.
It won't be a fun day. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have minutes, four sets of minutes to approve. The mayor and common council meeting, Rocktober 24th, the mayor and common council meeting on November 14th, the mayor and common council work session meeting on November 14th, and the mayor and common council closed meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff is their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gilbert. All those a favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
The I see they're having the eyes have it and the minutes are very much. We have one item on the consent calendar. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
It's a motion by Ms. Gilbert to approve the consent calendar. They're on the second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kavachi. Although the favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, say aye. And some calendars approved. Your hope from the mayor, Dr. Becker.
Thank you, Council President. Aside from what suddenly all happened this last weekend, it's been quiet over Thanksgiving. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. On Thursday, November 17th, myself, most of the council attended the grand opening of Covellon Spirits on Main Street. Our new distillery, I know I've been back since then to enjoy the story and when I talked to Jen and Drew, they were having a really phenomenal first two weeks in operation on Main Street. I'd like to thank Ms. Regal for attending the meeting. I know that we have had some really great representation from McDaniel College at our last several meetings and I know as part of the strategic plan, right, that there is a, oh, better connection, but improved connection, you know, with the city of Westminster. And I too really appreciate the growing relationship between McDaniel College. Oh, that connection, but a improved connection, you know, with the city of Westminster, and I too really appreciate the growing relationship between McDaniel College uh and the city. Um, and this focus on downtown involvement and engagement, and so I'm really happy to hear that, you know, there's positives on both. On both of our ends, um. On Saturday, I'm not gonna say much about it, because I know everyone will wanna talk about this a little bit, the holidays, uh, of course kicked off. With Small Business Saturday, the holiday roundup, the Miracle on Main Street, um, parade followed by the tree lighting, uh. I could go on, it was phenomenal, uh, the lights on the trees made it even more magical when we came up Main Street in a carriage. Uh, but I do just want to mention that uh we were honored to have the Estonian ambassador. Uh, and his family with us, so Chris John Creek. And his family um wrote in the parade, they were in the carriage before us and they attended the tree lighting. Uh, we hosted them uh after the parade uh downtown, and I think, you know, this highlights our growing. Relationship with our sister city in Estonia, which is Paida. Um, and I do wanna say thanks to uh Council President Greg Carrero, um, this was initially his idea. Um, to uh ask the ambassador and his family to attend the parade, and um. They love Westminster, and I think that this is the uh beginning of um a really great relationship. Between the city of Westminster, our Estonian ambassador, uh, and um continued relationship with Paida. And that is all.
Hey, thanks, Dr. Becker. Uh, move on now to reporting standing committee. As you all do it, on the way down to the Arts Council, which is Dayhoff, where lots of exciting things happening in the Arts Council.
A lot of, a lot of great program, a lot of simply great programming, um, the festival, of course, now we have the twenty fifth festival agrees that is taking place right now, um. Yeah, that will need to go, um. Brings a lot of folks into town, and we're always really excited about it, we also have the fourteenth annual Gallery of Gifts at the Arts Council. And that is also bringing in lots of folks. Um, to uh, to the Arts Council, and um, I should also mention HSP's eighth annual Ginger Cray Festival. Is taking place over at the um. Um, at Exploration Commons over at um. The Carroll County Public Library, and that is exciting also, um, everyone is collaborating extremely well with a lot of these events and coordinating these events. Um, and that's bringing lots of folks to Westminster, check the website for the Arts Council, a lot of fantastic uh programming, um. And we also have, um, the one thing that the the film lovers, um. Initiative, um, Frank Baylor is bringing in folks to speak about the movies, and uh we had Bernie Vogel. Uh, talk at Tumland about the movie Julia, which was really, really exciting, he was so excited about the movie. And the movie, which was done really well, and since we have always been a restaurant destination, I thought it was really appropriate. So, um, it's really excited about the the programming over at the Arts Council, check it out, and that'll be my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Uh, Mr. Ha, is the chair of the Economic Development Committee, from his uh remote location, will keep doing the report.
So I will just uh be brief, uh, we have rescheduled, our next meeting is on Thursday, December the eighth. At four o'clock at forty-five West Bay, uh, we will be continuing our discussions uh in regard to food trucks. And possibly updating our our ordinances related to that, thanks.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Ha, um, Finance Committee, we have a meeting. When are we saving this at most next? The fifth, that's right, thank you. Uh, on the summer fifth, um, and uh look forward to uh discussing some items there, uh. Clearing the budget, we will pay back all of you. First, our committee.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kavachi, Public Safety.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, the Westminster Police Department staff is conducting application, they're they're conducting applicant interviews. For the grant-funded body worn camera coordinator position, so uh they're doing that, uh, currently, on November nineteenth, the. Department uh staff conducted a written test for entry level police officer applicants. And then on December fifth, upcoming Chief Ledwell is going to be attending the Carroll County Police Accountability Board meeting. Um, I believe it's the fir- the first one, um, the board requests that police departments provide them with our staffing levels, our budget. As well as area concerns uh that we might have regarding the agency, and as we all know, that's uh. It's something that's mandated uh by the state that that takes place personally, and I think it's a giant waste of everybody's time, but that's just my opinion. Um, and then lastly, uh, I wanted to take a moment and compliment two of our officers, Sergeant uh Donovan and Officer Hall, right? Um, they they assisted an individual whose brother passed away. Earlier in the month, they were out on the scene, and they were, they did it in such a professional and caring manner that the individual took the time. To send a handwritten note to chief, complimenting them on the job that they did. Um, helping him deal with with the loss of his family member, um, and how professional they were, caring, and. You know, he he went on to say how how they're such a great reflection on the police department, um, and the way in which they comported themselves, so. I'd just a public, like to publicly take a moment, and I'm sure I speak for all of us, uh, to thank both Sergeant Donovan and Officer Hall for. Doing such an outstanding job, chief, I'm sure you'll take it back to them if we talk about them here at the meeting. Um, and then, again, I think I speak with the mayor and the council that we're all very grateful for, when that kind of letter comes in, it means a lot. And uh, again, one more reason we don't really need the Police Accountability Board in Westminster. We'll leave that alone, anyway, so great work to them, uh, kudos, and kudos to you, chief, because it all starts at the top. When it comes to that type of performance, so thank you, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi, and would you like to go to Public Parks Committee?
I will, very brief, um, final preparations for the Miracle Main Street, um, and construction on the Polar Express. For City Park was done by Streets Department, so I know they were very busy, um, that takes a lot of work to make that happen, and. Obviously, uh, I think we all really enjoyed it, and, you know, of course, wrecking parks, you know, they're they're the lead when it comes to. Those events, but, you know, the Streets Department and Miss Grover is always abusive, I heard her phrase, um, for the job that they do. Again, just bringing up the fact that they put a lot of time and effort into both of those, and worked out fantastic. Utilities, Utilities Department has identified and fixed a water main break on Bond Street. Uh, early morning of the twenty-seventh, which affected ten residents for approximately four hours, so they did a nice job there, so uh great work on both of those. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, um, Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
We have a meeting coming soon, um, I've been working on the agenda a little bit, and uh Ms. Gilbert has also. Offered some suggestions as to what she would like on the agenda, and if any of you all have any suggestions. As to what you would like on the agenda, be sure you get in touch with, um, council member Gilbert or myself. Um, I think we will all speak effusively about Miracle Main Street and the Polar Express and the lighting of the trees, and. Really appreciate all the hard work that everyone put in it, getting a wonderful response from citizens. About this event, we really appreciate it, that's my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff, um. Technology Committee, we have a meeting scheduled next week, but unfortunately, we've had to repot it, there's some conflicts, that's all right, things happen. And uh so I think it probably won't happen now till after the first of the year, but we can get together at that time. Uh, thank you, uh, now it's time for council comments and discussion, as an opportunity for council members to uh share anything. If on their minds that they'd like to uh. Uh, there's not elsewhere on the agenda for uh three reports, and uh. I am gonna just go first for once, because I just wanted to share with you all. Um, the tweet that Ambassador Creek sent out, everybody, he said, a new job experience I can add to my CV. Grand marshal of the Miracle on Main Street Parade in Westminster, Maryland. Westminster is a lovely and vibrant town, and has a sister pity relationship with Paida in Estonia, thank you, Mayor Ron Becker, Council President Greg Carrero. With the invite, uh, and the um, the embassy went on and uh did some tweets, you know, about it, so uh, famous in Estonia. About the events, and it was very nice to to be able to do that, um. The tweet about that, I also wanted to mention, um, and of course, the one fabulous event. All my colleagues will start to say, probably a wonderful one, the Streets Department, you know, this this brewer, the uh. Yeah, Parks and Rec staff, everybody did a fabulous job, lights downtown were great, um, uh, the music sounded good, I know next year, Mr. Dick's gonna work on getting the. Lights to flash and how to use it, very cool, right? But anyway, it was it was very. I'd like to, I'd like to share that we you got an invitation today, I know it's very late for everybody, but the uh former students of the Robert Oakley School. Uh, wanted to, the mayor and council to know that we are invited to join them for their annual, uh, get together this Saturday, it's gonna be. Unfortunately, it's not gonna be in Westminster for once, because they couldn't find a place here in town, they're gonna be attached to daughter over in Frederick on um Saturday afternoon. Um, and if anybody's interested, uh, they would love to have us join them, that's all I have, um, Mr. Kavachi.
Yeah, Mr. President, just, I'm not even gonna go into much details, echoing your comments related to the events downtown, how Main Street looks, I know. Had a vision, and she was talking about it, and uh what it was gonna be like, and it's every bit as grand and. Fantastic as I think she envisioned, the music is really awesome, how it doesn't echo, you know, I noticed no matter where you were. It didn't have that echoey, it just sounded good. And last but not least, I wanted to thank Ms. Emholtz and the staff for putting the candles here in City Hall, it looks really great, and it's been a number of years. Since we've had City Hall lit up and in the Christmas spirit.
Was that great at all?
Exactly, so it it really looks good, and obviously, living right here on Willow Street, I've had quite a few neighbors. Comment to me how excited they were to see that and how wonderful they think it looks, so. Really in the Christmas spirit here, Westminster, and uh you guys have done a wonderful job, so thank the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi, Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, um. I was especially happy with the opening of um Covellon, because I, I'm really interested in seeing the business look for expand. And I think that uh with the the vibrancy of um. Well, Ms. Yang and and Drew Copley, that uh, I think that they will encourage other folks to move in that direction. And I think that's a a really good step for the city of Westminster. Um, that's about it, Mr. President, thank you.
And uh please say it there, the gender, it tastes very good, I mean, you know, some of these new, you know, startup facilities, I mean, you taste their stuff. It's like turpentine.
Yeah.
The pairs is really good, very good. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, I don't have much, I have still remained very limited in my mobility the last two weeks, so unfortunately, I haven't been able to make a lot of the community events. But I was able to come out for the parade and to echo everybody else's thoughts, the um between the lights on Main Street and the lights in the parade. And the lights in City Park, it was rather magical, it kept my little grandson's attention the entire evening. Um, so that in itself for a two-year-old is pretty darn amazing, um, so I'm kinda looking forward to the lights to remain up all through winter for our winter on me. And to see what that develops says, but it was absolutely wonderful, so I was thanking all the staff for all their hard work.
And the buttons were a nice touch, too.
Yes, the only thing like, I know it's in our organs, but I'd love to be able to throw candy. Also, but out of the. Or even hand out with little elves or something, like kids want candy.
You're allowed to do that, but throwing it is.
Yeah. Yeah. We're not allowed to walk over elves, so. Your grandson is more. Yeah, maybe. We can dress him as an elf.
We can put Mark in an elf costume.
The pot's going to boil. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert, Mr. Bob.
I won't add much for being remote, obviously, the parade was wonderful, uh, Main Street looked fantastic, um, I've heard a ton of positive feedback. Uh, regarding the the lighted trees, um, and feedback like, when are you gonna light the rest of the trees and? And and you know, I try to explain to people that, you know, this is the first year, of of course, we'd like to do more, but it is not. You know, just a matter of throwing up lights on trees, because there's the issue with electricity. Uh, and access to that, so it's a little bit more complicated than what people maybe would would think. Um, and you know, the section that we lit up is where we have all the nice street lamps, uh, that makes powering those lights, uh, you know. Very possible, so uh, you know, I certainly think we all have gotten a ton of feedback, and we certainly will keep that feedback in mind. Uh, as we move forward, so, um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ha. Bye. Move on now to ordinance and resolutions, um, we have um one item. Uh, here, adopting ordinance number nine forty-seven, amending chapter fourteen, elections, section fourteen. Uh, point one point one, board of elections, to alter the composition of the board of election. By reducing the size of the board from six members to three. Zinnhaus.
Thank you, sir, chapter fourteen of the city code outlines the city's election process, and among other things establishes a board of election of six members. In section of fourteen dash one point one, board of elections. Mayor and common council have determined that the current size of the board of elections is inefficient and unnecessary. The city attorney has drafted the proposed legislation to reduce the number of board of election members from six to three. That recommends the adoption of ordinance nine four seven and ordinance that amends chapter fourteen. Elections, section fourteen dash one point one, board of elections to alter the composition of the board of elections by reducing the side of the board from six to three members.
Thank you, Ms. Emholtz, and uh, you know, I think, as we've all discussed. Uh, the last year, the last two years, surely, since uh. We, since we made some significant changes to the elections, um, ordinance, um, you know, after thinking about it, we decided another thing we'd like to. The alter, this was one of the major ones, um, not just downsizing uh membership of the court, but also. Who's eligible to be audit, right now, the members of the board have to be drawn, and the election judges will alter that, with the mayor can appoint any individuals. You know, in the city to the elections board, which I think. As well. Thanks to Mrs. Lavan for helping us draft this, I should not get it, get it right, I think that's a good step towards. You know, trying to fix some of those things that. Yeah. Really there, so uh we'll have to study time in the next city elections and uh. Um, any discussion, well, actually, first we need a motion, yeah, a motion to adopt. Number nine forty-seven.
I'm moved to adopt nine forty-seven, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi, is there a second?
A second.
The second from Ms. Gilbert, um, is it a discussion? Any questions? Here we go, move on to the other, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number nine forty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye, the IC have the eyes have it, and your ordinance is adopted. Mayor, you're an outstanding appointment, board of elections, excellent, I have to add it. Very good, thank you. All right, next item, I bid, uh, we have one bid, uh, tonight, a reward of contract for police. For a police emergency generator replacement, Eastern Sales and Engineering, Baltimore, Maryland. In the amount of two hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, Mr. Day. Thank you, Mr. President. The current capital project fund including includes funding for emergency generator replacement. The project was advertised on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, the. But the pre-bid meeting and bid due dates are October seventh, twenty twenty-two, and October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Pricing was requested for two options, a diesel and a natural gas operating generator. Three bids were received, loads of summary of those three visions. Eastern Sales and Engineering, diesel price of two hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, natural gas price of two hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars. The fourth LLC, two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars for diesel, natural gas, two hundred two thousand seven hundred dollars. That means our electric LLC, diesel price two hundred thirty-five. Thousand sixty-eight dollars, the natural gas price of two hundred nine one thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars. The city staff has reviewed and evaluated the bids, and has determined that to bid for natural gas generator, Eastern Sales and Engineering, total amount. Of two hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be acceptable, with regards.
With regards to the city, a gas line will need to be installed in order to feed the generator. The cost for the upgraded gas line from the U T E D, needed to feed the police station, the generator is unknown. An estimated amount of twenty-five thousand dollars has been added, even though it offsets this cost. The tax memorandum clarifies preferences for the gas generator and diesel generator. The overall total is two hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars for this project. The FY twenty-three budget for this project is a hundred eighty thousand dollars. A budget amendment will be needed for the amount of one hundred six thousand five hundred dollars. Staff recommends that the mayor and council include that bid with Eastern Sales and Engineering, Baltimore, Maryland, in the amount of two hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for a natural gas operating generator.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Day. Um, so we, um. Heard, uh, Mr. Dick's report, and I have a motion to accept the bid.
I have a motion to accept the bid.
The motion by Ms. Gilbert to accept the bid, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
The second by Mr. Dayhoff. Um, any discussion or questions for Mr. Day?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cabachi.
This is actually for Mr. Day, really more for, I, I guess, Ms. Emholtz, um, the. Hundred six thousand dollars, that is not budgeted for this, uh, where, where are we pulling that out of?
Um, I think it's. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head, but my gut instinct is, since this was bid properly, then we would request for a command of our upons.
That's what I was hoping you would say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Haw.
I, I sort of remember, um, at the last meeting, I watched it afterwards, believe it or not, I did my homework. Um, Mr. Kabachi mentioning having some thoughts about the diesel versus the natural gas and staff was gonna look into that. Um, what was the conversation there as far as, you know, um, whether we should have considered. Or go in the direction of diesel? I, I know, Mr. Kabachi, you brought that up, um, in the last meeting. What was the outcome of that?
Mr. Kabachi, so, Mr. Haw, yeah, I, I, I got some, uh, additional communication from Ms. Emholtz and, and the staff. Um, and bottom line is that I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the natural gas. My concern with the diesel was solely based upon. Potentially an earthquake or something like that that would disrupt the gas line. But the benefits to the natural gas generator in terms of maintenance and, and, and the, the ease to take, make sure it's gonna be working all the time. They're, 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 they're more reliable than, than a diesel generator. Overall, so what we may give up in the. Rare, rare circumstance that we have a gas interruption, we, we gain more by the serviceability of natural gas versus diesel. So. I'm comfortable with, uh, with staff recommendation of diesel versus natural gas for what it's worth.
Okay, good. That, that was my, my question, because when you were bringing that up last time, I was kind of. In, in my mind, having similar thoughts. So I'm glad to know what the result was. Thanks.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Emholtz.
Um, while the staff was doing its research, we also had a chance to sit down with, uh, Councilmember Dayhoff, who was able to give us quite a bit of history about. The types of, um, events that might exist that would cut off the gas line, for example. I know that came up last time, you know, what if we lose the gas and. Um, he was helpful in, in, um. Kind of putting that concern to rest, that we hadn't experienced that before as well. So that was, um, in part what we were looking at. Not just the maintenance, which is what Councilmember Kabachi mentioned, but also sort of. What, the what-if question, because if the police, you know, we want the police department to have access to, you know, its power. So, um, Councilmember Dayhoff was helpful in that.
Thank you. Well, we all recall the Satch's earthquake in twenty-one.
Luckily, I don't think we lost gas.
I've been a couple of long trips, but not good. All right, thank you. All right, uh, any further discussion or questions on this? Mr. Dayhoff.
We funded the original, um, emergency generator by a grant. And. How it works. I recall years ago when we. Considering bonding out something, uh, we had to pass a resolution or whatever. And that's not my point. I, I wonder if we could still look into some grants. For an emergency generator for a police station. I mean, they, they've gotta be out there. I, I. I was involved in obtaining the grant when we built this one here. And I guess I'd like to redouble our efforts to find a grant. I, I don't know if we can. Find a grant that'll pay or something we've already paid for. We, we never know. There's no downside that we can.
Well, you know, Ms. Emholtz, her team, they're the deciduous, chasing down grants, so. You know.
I mean, anything they can.
It's one, it would be a wonderful item for the governor's capital, but it would be a wonderful item for, uh, any of the. Public safety initiatives that are coming out of Indianapolis these days. I'd love to think we look at that. When, when do we anticipate installing this charity? Simples.
Mr. President, um, a couple of things. One, we absolutely prefer to pay for everything with other people's money. So we will continue to look. Police Department did look for a long time, um, for grant opportunities and was unsuccessful, but we will continue to look. Um, we would like to put the order in right away, but we're told it's gonna take a year to get here, which is terrible. Uh, as far as needing the generator, but would give us a little extra time to find a grant. Um, and we wouldn't, in that case, we wouldn't pay for it until it arrives on the scene. So. Probably that meets the state's requirement if we're able to find some grant for that.
That's great. Maybe that's, that's a good. Well, I mean, I would like. Place it sooner than later. Yeah, that's good news. So, okay. Um, I'll speak with the person who, uh, helped obtain the grant for the generator and the fire station. I know her pretty well. So I'll see if she has it.
Thank you, thank you. Right. Here is no further discussion. We'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving, um, the award, please say aye.
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 Aye. Yeah, I seem to have it, and I have it, and, uh, the contract for being awarded. Uh, unfinished business. There is no unfinished business, of which I am aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business to bring before the council? If there are none, we'll move on to new business. Um, first item here, waiver of the procurement process and award of sole source purchase from Seal Analytical. In the amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars for an auto analyzer, you can use the water reclamation facility lab. Ms. Zinnhaus.
Thank you, sir. Water Reclamation Facility Lab, which is the wastewater department. Currently uses an auto analyzer AQ two from Seal Analytical. We have used this analyzer since January two thousand and eight. The SEAL unit has been reliable for over fourteen years. Last year, SEAL informed us that they no longer support the current model and recommended the replacement. Seal Analytical Model AQ four hundred. Seal Analytical is the only manufacturer supplier of the AQ four hundred. The fiscal year twenty-three capital improvement budget included fifty thousand dollars for this project. Staff recommends that the mayor and council authorize a sole source purchase from Seal Analytical in the amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, um, on the waiver of the procurement process as a word.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second item? The second by Mr. Kabachi. Any discussion or any questions with staff? If there are none, we'll move on to a vote. All in good favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say aye. Yeah, I seem to have it, and I have it. And the, uh, profit waived with the award, uh, can go to Ron Seal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we were going to, as I said at the outset, we're gonna pull the next item. Uh, the next, next item after that is approval of Keller Brothers, page order number three, W M P dash zero zero two. In the community pool project in the amount of three thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents. Ms. Gruber.
Yes, good evening. As you know, Keller Brothers Incorporated is the general contractor for the Westminster Municipal Pool renovation project. During a recent progress meeting with Keller Brothers, details about our door hardware, locks and keying of the new filtration and family restroom building were discussed. As a result of this conversation, it was discovered that the family restroom doors did not include a security or maintenance lock that could be controlled from the exterior of those units. The only locking mechanisms specified for the restroom doors were occupant-controlled. Meaning if you're in the restroom, you can lock it so that no one can walk in on you. Um, this was identified as an issue that would need to be addressed. It is imperative for staff to have the ability to control access to the family restrooms. When the pool complex is closed or for maintenance issues that may arise. The other related item that was discussed with the need for the existing buildings, the current pool office, men's locker room, women's locker room, and the community building. To be rekeyed so that all doors and locks are keyed to the same master. Keying all the locks to the same master will eliminate the need for multiple keys and will also create the ability to isolate access. To certain areas of the pool complex through a series of submaster keys. To accomplish this, all the lock cylinders on the existing building doors will need to be replaced. Proposed change order number three and the amount of three thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents will provide necessary external locking mechanisms. For the new family restrooms and will also provide new lock cylinders for all existing doors, resulting in a cohesive master key system for the municipal pool complex. This change order will not alter the contract time for completion. A budget amendment will be needed for the entire amount of three thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents. With that, staff recommends the mayor and council authorize Keller Brothers Inc. to perform the work identified above. Through the approval and execution of change order number three.
Thank you, Ms. Gruber. It's a very lot of keys. A lot of doors, we guess, over there. Um, they have a motion to approve the change order.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff to approve, is there a second?
Second.
And the second by Ms. Gilbert. Any questions or any discussion in council? And this will be one of the items that we talked about, budget amendment.
Yeah.
Mine is, it's both.
Mr. President. We, we were notifying the council and here that a budget amendment may be needed. We use the term that it will be needed, but it's possible that we can absorb that within the current budget. Such as.
It's even better. Great. Thank you.
We just wanted to highlight that we don't currently have that amount budgeted in this particular project.
No, we're, we're well aware how much we budgeted for that pool. Oh, yeah. Yes. All right. Any further discussion or any questions? If there are none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say aye. Yeah, I seem to have it, and I have it. And, uh, in order to. Excuse me. Next item is approval of a sole source contract with Desmond Industries for a downtown parking study in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And we will turn to Mr. Depot for information on this long-awaited study.
Thank you and good evening. Uh, primary issue with adaptive reuse and redevelopment in downtown Westminster is meeting the on-site parking space requirements of the zoning ordinance. As many downtown properties have little to no parking on site. The city, as we know, is what has well-positioned off-street parking spaces, parking space assets in a number of metered and un-metered parking spaces. But it is unclear how these assets are currently being used today and are sufficient to be leveraged to support existing and future commercial and residential development in downtown Westminster. Staff is recommending that a comprehensive and quantitative parking study be completed. That will analyze the current parking conditions and challenges, assess the impact of known, proposed and potential development. And given this vision of future parking study and supply and demand. Develop a parking management action plan that maximizes the effectiveness of the city's existing future parking facilities. But in a cost-effective and ideally cost-neutral manner. The fiscal year twenty-three budget allocated thirty thousand dollars under Economic Development Studies Consultants, which is intended to be used for the completion of a comprehensive downtown parking study. Additionally, fiscal year twenty-three budget allocated sixty thousand dollars for contractual services. Staff recommends that the mayor and council approve a sole source contract with Desmond Design Management to conduct a comprehensive downtown parking study. In the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. We have a motion.
I'll move, Mr. President.
All right, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
No, seconded.
The second motion for Mr. Kabachi and the second for Mr. Dayhoff. Um, to be, as, as part of this, is it appropriate? Um, for them, for us to ask them to give us some recommendations on, on some good signage for accessing this off, the off-street parking, because. They're one of the complaints I've heard, and I've noticed myself over the years, we've talked about it. Over the years, we really don't have good signage, direct people to what is really quite a bit of parking, you know, that we have available off, off-street. So hopefully that can be part of the parking manager.
And it will be. We did ask that specifically to look at how we access the parking locations as well.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Yeah, we worked on signage, we built parking decks. And when we built the parking decks, we had determined at that point in time, is there a comprehensive parking analysis? To encourage folks to use the parking decks. Um, the model for the parking decks was, was, was Frederick and, uh. Mary Young helped us a great deal with, with coordinating and figuring out how to go about. The parking decks. It's interesting, when I go to Frederick, nobody thinks anything of parking and the parking. Garage and walking a great distance, but encouraging folks to do that in Westminster has been a challenge. Um, but that would help us a great deal with some of the comprehensive look that we want to. Um, that we want to achieve as far as attracting businesses to downtown Westminster. Because some of these places have no park. And, but the parking, but within a block, within a half a block, is, is up to the parking garage. Um. So, um, I'm really looking forward to this. And then I don't know if it's the time to do it or not. I'm still looking forward to this in part. I really, really want to see that come forward. I, I get asked about that once a month.
Well, certainly we did. And, you know, we, we, we talk a lot about site. But we never really did anything about the site, in my view. So I think that's one of the reasons. In fact, Mr. Haw, I think you have a comment?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to mention, as, I'm very excited that we're moving forward with this. Um, as Chair of Economic and Community Development. As also as the Executiveial and the Planning and Zoning Commission, this data will be incredibly helpful with staff and also the Planning and Zoning Commission. And us, as we move forward, to look at how we may change some of our ordinances and codes. Um, because sometimes we get different complaints from different people that come into the community, uh, that, you know, well, in this. Area, they do things this way. And while, you know, we. You know, that might seem like it makes sense. We gotta be very careful with how we make these changes. And, and having good data will really inform our ability to make smart. Uh, changes to the code that will encourage businesses, but also not put us in a position that we end up having a parking problem of not having enough parking. Um, so I'm super excited that we're moving forward with this and, uh, will be very excited to see the results and then kind of brainstorm where we go from there. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Haw. Anyone else? Mr. President, Mr. Day.
And one of, something that I've been interested in doing for many, many years is restoring parking to the south side of Main Street. In the downtown business district. When the state rebuilt Main Street in that area. Um, parking was taken away, south side, on the, the St. John Catholic Church side. Um, which is now the library. It, it was taken away and we were putting that center lane in. And I have taken a number of pictures in order to make my case. I, I very seldom see that center lane being used. Except for down where the old First National Bank, where the, uh, right there, uh, the final half block, that I used to have parking on that side of, although. I can understand that we would want a turn lane down there, but I would hope that we would, perhaps, the parking folks could look at maximizing or finding some other parking alternatives. And I, I, I think it would be a great help for downtown Westminster if we were to have door parking that side of the street. Um, all the old pictures of Main Street, parking is on that side of the street. Um, and when, uh, the state suggested that we take away parking on that, it was extremely controversial. And what the city told us and what the state told us is, well, let's just try it for a little while. It's been forty years. So I guess maybe that's a little while, but I think it's time to restore the parking on that side. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if you have no other question, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approval, approval of the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, I seem to have the eye covered and the contract will be approved.
Thank you.
Um, that concludes the council. We'll move on now to, how about Ms. Imols?
Thank you, sir. Uh, I wanted to start off by talking for a moment about the Miracle on Main event. I had a chance to speak with, I brought a few people to the event and I know some people that brought a few people to the event. And I know other people who brought people to the event. We had a lot of outside folks coming in and all of them said that they, in their entire lives, they'd never been to a holiday parade or a holiday event, that they had seen these on, you know, movies and Hallmark movies, but they didn't know that they actually existed. And right, which warmed my heart. Um, but that is exactly what I thought was going to happen when we, when I asked for those lights to go into the budget. And why that's significant to me is that moving forward in years to come, that word gets spread. Um, I don't know who's on the Twitter page of the ambassador or who's on the Twitter page of all the folks that shared that information. Um, but we are building this event that the staff works so hard for, that the city budgets for, and we're very, you know, we spend a lot of time in the fall preparing for, is now going to be the cornerstone of a way for us to bolster Main Street and provide um, new peoples to shop downtown and to be interested in our community, which is really located in a good spot for commuting, you know, in other places. And, and this is how we get there, right? We talk about branding and marketing. This is, this is how we get there. We bring in people from the outside to look at it. We get excited about it, um, to tell all their friends and then next year we bring more. Um, and so I was really excited to hear that from a lot of different people as I was meeting new people. Uh, speaking of the budget and some of these things have been mentioned, but um, we have uh, quite a few things that were in the budget this year that have now been implemented related to the downtown area. We're talking, which has spoken about the speakers many, many times. Those are now up and running. Um, they're operating from eleven AM to eight PM. Um, if anyone who's listening has any concerns about a concert that's coming up or something or they need them, you can pause. We can absolutely do that. Just reach out to the city in advance and let us know when that is. Um, we have a little message that's going across every thirty minutes that encourages that thanks everyone for coming or reminds them that the city, those speakers are sponsored by the city and encourages folks to go shop at the shops and eat at the restaurants. Um, you'll also notice we have a new sign at forty-five West Main, the City Administration Building. It says, "How holidays." It looks a little similar to the sign that's at the Police Department. Since this is a new building um, for us, well, a new old building for us. Um, that's our first year of having that new sign. Councilmember Kavati mentioned the candles at City Hall. That's a new item this year or maybe an old item that we brought back from years past. Um, and our council member Gilbert mentioned Winter on Main, uh, which is what we're calling the lights now. So they're not just holiday lights. They're going to be up till March. I'm working with the business community to um, it, to think of new and exciting ways that we can activate the streets at night in the winter time, because it's very bright now downtown with all the lights. Um, and they're excited. So new things to come that I can't announce quite yet, but in January, we're going to see some new and special events that are organic and grown up through the business community um, that are in part in coordination because of the new lights that we have downtown. So thank you again, Mayor and Council for including that in the budget.
Mister President, Simols.
Yeah.
Just, uh, you'll find this interesting because you just said that, you know, that they're organically grown through the business community. You probably don't know this. Um, and I'm not sure everybody in the room does. That, that parade actually was not, that was an idea from the business community. Laurie Graham owned a flower shop um, at the time, and I believe there might have been one or two other folks, but I don't know. Was it Lindy as well?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was the business community that really, they were the ones that came up with the idea and, and I think even played a pretty big role in its first year and, and getting it kind of launched and off the ground. So you know, that's uh, that, 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 that's wonderful that they're coming up with more stuff. And you may have to remind, there's probably a lot of folks that have business downtown that don't realize that that was something that they came up with, but then the city really helped bring it to, to where it's at today. Through a lot of effort.
A lot of effort.
Anyway, just for what it's worth.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful to hear. And we, we continue to foster the business community with our monthly meetings and coordinating. So that's good to know.
Mayor, uh, I did, I, I didn't mention it earlier, but I just, as you were talking, I just saw that. I did want to uh, say thank you and, and send us on to the staff as well, um, for the effort in decorating the buildings that are not currently housing business. Uh, so Vincent Seethood, when we came around the corner with the wreaths and the decorations, um, and the other buildings as well, um, I think that as well added um, that evening, um, added a lot uh, to the, to the event. So, um, and it was just those little touches. Okay, they seem little from hours ago, but I'm sure, you know, I saw the street departments out all day on Saturday um, as I was out. So, but thank you because that as well. And that was something that I don't think, you know, necessarily was thought of in the way that you had this year.
Thank you. Yeah, that's the next item on my list is to, to let everyone know that the staff work together to identify the vacant businesses downtown. And some of the staff themselves went out to do that. So Ms. Gruber is responsible for coffee music, if I remember correctly, um, herself.
I'm that myself.
Okay, with other folks, but she herself with other folks did that. But we also hired a local artist to do some of the work as well. Um, and then of course, our streets department um, also got in on the game with Vincent Seethood. So we wanted to make sure that there weren't dark spots downtown, this is a parade came through. So thank you. Uh, one more item about the speaker. We're almost certain that we, almost certain, almost certain that we got a minor grant from the state to cover part of the expenses with the speakers. Because we are always after other people's money.
Excellent.
It's not going to cover the whole amount, but it's a piece of it. And we, we think we got it. It's a little willy-nilly right now at the state level, but we think we got it.
Lot of change going on.
A change going on. Um, I want to say, um, I want to talk just a minute about the Polar Express, which is an event that was held at City Park. I think this was the first year that we held this event.
Correct.
Um, I mean, I, I'm not that, I'm not frequently just, you know, blown away in general, and that's not my disposition, but man, that was special. It really was special. And there was a line, you know, around the corner and I looked at it from the street. So I wasn't at the, you know, in City Park, but man, I just thought that was something spectacular. So I hope the community enjoyed it as well. That was sort of a one-time thing after the event. Um, but it, it seems wonderful. So I want to just take a moment to thank staff for that. That was really, you know, cherry on top of an amazing event. Um, okay, we're going to start with one other announcement to make and I'm just going to popcorn around the room. As you all know, we had a fire at the Durbin House. Um, we are still gathering information about what needs to be done and will present something to the mayor and council um, in the very near future. So we're still working on it. And probably the item that we talked off the agenda tonight will likely come back in December, fingers crossed if we can get that information. All right, uh, let's start with the finance department.
All right, thank you, Ms. Imols. Um, I just will share with you briefly that our auditors are back on-site this week. They were on-site today and they'll be there Thursday and Friday. But um, while they're not going to be there tomorrow, Wednesday, they are working remotely. Capacity always since COVID, everyone can work remotely now. Um, if they don't wrap up and even if they do and we have questions and need to go back and forth with them a bit, we've also observed December fourteenth and fifteenth to wrap up with them. That's it. Thank you.
We were very delayed last year in finishing the audit for one reason or another and thankfully with the leadership of Ms. Rogers and Ms. Gardner, who's still working with us alongside us. We are currently on schedule, on my schedule at least, to finish by the end of December. Um, which is wonderful news for us. Anything for the finance department? We'll move on to the police department. Chief?
I'm getting your mayor and council. We don't have too much to report this uh, meeting. I wanted to add uh, that well, we, if you remember, we got approval to purchase a Dodge Durango to replace a vehicle that was involved in a collision. It was a total loss. Not the officer's fault. Um, but uh, finding vehicles right now is a challenge. It takes a long time. So we're able to buy a white Dodge Durango and have it wrapped uh, by a local company. When we looked at it, it looks really good. I mean, I couldn't tell that it's wrapped versus painted. So essentially they um, changed the color from white to the silver that matches the pleats. And then all of the um, markings of our uh, patrol police cruisers are on it. So uh, they were able to do that just a few days uh, based on some factor of the photo that we provided to them. And um, I think it looks really good. So at some point, uh, I'll have it and be able to show it, but it's getting updated with the emergency equipment right now. We should have it back in the next couple of days.
Chief, that's become very cheap, Mister President, man. That's become very popular with exotic, high-end exotic cars. People are wrapping, you know, five hundred thousand dollar vehicles as opposed to painting them. Because you can do different things with it that you can't do with paint. It's got some durability that paint doesn't have. So you're right there in league with the Lamborghinis and Ferraris of the world, that Durango. So, very nice.
Well, I think we'll see the longevity of the wrap. We'll use this as like a test case, see how, you know, over time, how it looks. But I've been told that um, it actually would help us with the residual value of the vehicle.
Yeah.
Unwrap it, you don't have the faded sticker signings.
That's why they do it with the high-end cars, it protects the, the fact of the paint underneath. So they can actually draw one and, and then peel that wrap off and change color again if they want to. It's actually, it's a great way to go. We may end up finding down the road, we'll do that with a lot of our vehicles.
That's all I got, Mister President. Chief, it's about time that we had a police truck. We don't have a police truck. Or a Tesla. Sykesville's got a Tesla. They really do. Sykesville's got a Tesla. But we could do a truck. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
I have it for horses.
Well, I was, I, I didn't, I thought I was.
No, all the time for horses.
But I put that up on Facebook recently and I got a lot of feedback and I was afraid to, but mounted patrol. We, we had a mounted patrol for a long time in Westminster.
Same, Mister. Sorry.
Thank you, man.
That's why I was saying to you before.
Sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions for the police department? No. Move on to the planning department then.
Thank you and good evening again. On November seventeenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission conditionally approved Site Development Plan S twenty-one eleven to construct a forty thousand square foot medical center at four oh four Malcolm Drive, Westminster. Um, as Mayor Becker reported out, I mentioned earlier, the holiday market opened this past Saturday and it will be open December third, tenth, and seventeenth from nine AM to ten, to one PM at seventeen West Main Street. That's the Stockdale property. Also, the Small Business Saturday Passport Program started this past Saturday and runs till December the eleventh. Passports can be picked up at participating downtown businesses. Westminster businesses are displaying a Small Business Saturday Passport Window plane, which is designed to mimic the passport and includes a QR code that links the passport program website, which lists all participating businesses. Uh, beginning tomorrow and extending to December twenty-fifth, uh, the mayor and councilor has waived the downtown parker, parking meter fees on Main Street, allowing free parking for up to three hours. And we look forward to people visiting, dining, and shopping locally in downtown Westminster. And we do have ten participants for the Mayor's Cup um, award that will be coordinated with the mayor to uh, award that, award the winner of the, of the cup. And that completes my report.
For those who are listening, the passport program is pretty great. You get a prize at the end of it. You are already shopping downtown or in other places throughout the county. So go pick one up. There's not a lot of people that submit it. So your chances are pretty high of getting, I think it's a fifty dollar.
Fifty dollar gift certificate. We have forty-seven participating businesses. The farmers market is included into that uh, as per program as well.
Yeah, so go pick one up, go pick one up, one of those passports. Take it around, do a little shopping, get your Christmas gifts, and then get fifty dollar gift certificate for yourself. Any other questions for the planning department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the housing department, Mister Brown.
Thank you, Mister Brown. Good evening to everyone. Uh, I just wanted to report that we are still working on moving people off the waiting list. We've taken them uh, through the eligibility process and hope in the next uh, couple of weeks, we can start actually issuing vouchers to people for them to go out and search. Much of that is going to depend on how rapidly they get their information back to it, but I'm real pleased at the progress we are making in getting through that process. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the housing department?
Mister Imols, for a comment, got a question. I had an opportunity a week or two ago, I needed uh, to go to the department to uh, get something. And the lady that came to the window, and I wish I could remember her name, I apologize that I can't, um, waited on me and, and answered a couple of questions, got me informed that I needed. She had no idea who I was, there's no reason she should. And she could not have been more polite and helpful and friendly. It was just, it was, you know, as a citizen, just going there, not as a councilman. Fantastic experience. It was just a wonderful customer service experience. Uh, that's one.
It was, uh, Mister Presmo.
Yeah.
But glad to know that.
Absolutely.
And uh, that's what we hope. Every interaction uh, with the public is light. Uh, we don't, we don't achieve it a hundred percent of the time, but I want that every interaction to be pleasant regardless of who comes.
That's what I had. She had no idea who I was.
Thank you for that, sir. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Oh, I'm also hearing that from landlords. I'm really, I'm, you've really turned it around. And I, I can't thank you enough.
Well, thank you.
I can't thank you. I'm hearing, I'm hearing from the landlords about great customer service and this is a, a real pleasant um, direction. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Councilmember Kavati. We always hear about the negative uh, complaints, but we don't always hear about the positive. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other questions, comments for the housing department? Hearing none, we will move on to um, Mister Dick with Public Works.
I'm going to say once. Once again, we've talked about most of the things I had going on in the past two weeks. So really don't have much to report. If you have any questions.
Any questions for the Public Works Department? And finally, we will wrap it up with our star of the day, Ms. Gruber. And the Recreation and Parks Department.
I am not the star. It is all of you and it's every single staff person um, in this room. Um, thank you for your enthusiasm and your use of praise and participation in the Miracle on Main Street event. Um, we work so well together on the city staff. We are like a family right now. And I think my newest staff member brought it home at the end of a very busy night on Saturday night. She said, she's a seasoned recreational staff professional. So she's been in the field for thirty-plus years. And she said to me, the difference working here than anywhere else I've ever worked is everybody works together and supports each other. And it is because of Ms. Imols's leadership and your continued support in all of us and the things that we do every day, that really cultivates that environment. So our gratitude to you for that. Um, we probably, by all of our estimation, and really the Recreation and Parks staff never gets to see the parade or the crowd. Um, but I do believe that this is probably our largest crowd since twenty fifteen. Um, so we were inundated with people at the Armory for Santa Street and the Polar Express Experience after the parade was over. Um, so we've never seen that many people attend the um, children's event afterwards. So we were, we were delighted and we were very busy. Um, we did have a malfunction with our train, so we were sad about that. Um, but I think that staff handled it well. And the opportunity for those that didn't get to ride the train to wander through the lights was just as nice of an experience. Um, we had free hot cocoa and inside of gymnasium, children could create a tray for cookies for Santa. And a mug for milk for Santa. Um, they also had a plethora of games they could enjoy. And if they went to all the games and participated in those, they got their card stamped and a prize for having stamps um. Their card fully stamped. So it was a great environment in the gym. We had a record number of people attend our Jingle Bell Run. We had three hundred registered. Um, we had over two hundred and sixty cross the finish line. Um, and a lot of those registrations came in um between Wednesday. And Saturday morning. So, um, we had a lot of homework to do to get our data correct so that our results could be published. Um, they were published Saturday night, um, and they were refined today. So our final results are out there. On our Facebook page and the Maryland Timing um website, in case anyone's listening and is still looking for those. Um, thank you for your patience. Also, we are getting ready to welcome Santa in his residence on the library lawn. Saturdays in December, the third, the tenth and the seventeenth. From noon to four, so we encourage families to bring their children out. And enjoy our music and our lit trees and our downtown businesses and stop by and see Santa and Mrs. Claus. And then on top of that, you can enjoy a free horse-drawn carriage ride. Along Historic Willis Street, um, returning back to our Main Street. Carriages do board behind like this pizza. It is free. They run from noon to four as well. So please, don't let Miracle on Main be your last visit to downtown. Come back again and again. We have many more things to offer as we head into this holiday season. That concludes my report unless there are questions.
Ms. Gruber, um, my grandson thoroughly loved the mud and. Uh, the the craft of making all that. Um, we didn't make make it there. We took it home because um attention spans are a little short. Um, and we ended up walking on the top side of the park because Polar Express had broken down by that time. And the view was just amazing. Like, that was, I think, just about as neat an experience as riding through on the train. Um, without the waiting on the line. So um, I, just as a tip for next year. Decorating and seeing it around the circle of the park was really.
Thank you. Excellent. I appreciate that.
I wonder where those lights stay up.
So they will be up as long as they don't get torn down or vandalized. So we're hoping that it will be lit every weekend.
Good. 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 How many people did come to the Miracle on Main Street? I was wondering, I was, I, that's my, I was gonna ask you. Chief.
Thank you.
I can just speak out and go, it was packed from the paper, shoulder on Main Street and all the way above. I mean, years ago, when I used to cover events like that, I would pick out one five-foot base and try it. And no guest comments, no guest comments is that a lot. That was a lot of people. That was a lot of people. I mean, I guess there's no better time, but uh to echo Mr. Colati's remarks, fault that was also generated. When it first started in nineteen seventy-eight. Having a relationship is really important to step prior. Relationship.
Just wanna wrap up by saying, uh, in addition to putting on the event on Saturday, um. We had a tango outage, which left the fitness center with no internet. Which meant their point of entry system didn't work. So in addition to putting an event on, they were dealing with that. With the grace that they always do. So Ms. Gruber, thank you again for having a plan B, C, D, E and F um in place. We we appreciate that. That's the staff apart.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, uh. With the rest, and uh, the final item on our agenda, this is in the comments, where we invite the public to address the mayor and council. On any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or other city issues. If you did not attend in the public meeting, we invite you to send just your comments or concerns via email. And comments at westminstermd.com. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor. Comments should include their address and phone number with their comment. Well, now invite comments from anyone who is president. Um, and uh. Please, uh, you know, give your name and address for the election. Everybody like to hear.
Uh, sir. Uh, Thomas Sterner, two thirty-five Lupo Road. Um, a great meeting. Um, and I, the lights are really wonderful and I would like to make a pitch, which I've already made to. Uh, Mr. Dick, um, to light sprouts. And there is a uh, there is a conservation grant for ten thousand. And um. I I I think that it would, we probably get it. Um, because I know it's complicated, especially if we light it the way I want to light it, but. But it it, uh, I think the money's available. The due date is March the twenty-fourth. And I'm happy to help and I spoke in more detail, Mr. Dick.
Right, that would be very much, that would be great. Could we keep it lit?
Yeah, that's, that would be.
Be a little permanent.
Yeah, be a lit. I'd like to cast the shadow on the building, but it means that the light has to be high. So there's problems with that, but any light would be better than. I, when I just drove up the street. It looks so wonderful, the street, and I couldn't see that would turn off.
All right, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Um, Heidi Regal, one oh eight Bond Street. So I just wanna say thank you so much. Uh, we were up until four AM yesterday. Um, dealing with a flooding in our basement. So um, your, the office has already gotten in touch with us about. Insurance, the cover, you know, just covering it, liability and going out for him. So I just appreciate the. The quick, quick reply in a very dire situation, yes.
Yeah, thank you. But, well, I think that's all the public that's here, so. That will include us in the comments, I suppose. And that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Uh, wanna remind everyone that we are canceling the next meeting, the regular meeting, which is December twenty-sixth.
I tried to stop you.
Um, and so, uh, with that, you know, we are good. Thank you.